And I broke it. He came back and he said, "It didn't work that way. It's gotta be one."
It's okay.
I'm not in pain. It just looks bad.
If I may have your attention, it's six o'clock, so I'm going to call the July 20th, 2017 meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College District to order. Mr. Gates, are there any public comments? No public comments. I would ask approval of the minutes of the June 15th meeting, please. Dr. Morrison, seconded by Dr. Evans. Any corrections or additions? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We have a couple of reports from the board. I'll start with Ms. Ayala.
Okay. Just excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Appleman. I have a couple of things to talk about. One in particular, Ms. Appleman and I had a visit of the data center today. It was very, very impressive. So, thank you very much, Vice Chancellor Raghu for taking us on that tour. Just a couple of things I'd like to share. You know, what impressed me most is the data center, of course, is the heart of our technology services. And this, you know, we have all these campuses and we have these other facilities that they're supporting, and it was just tremendously impressive. So, a couple of things that I learned is that eighty percent of our server environment is virtualized. And that's, of course, like I said, that supports all of our campuses, and it allows for more efficiencies and flexibility also in our services. It's an enterprise-level environmental control, and we provide technology services for all of our students, and that's the ones that, the fall and the summer as well, and throughout the year. So, you're looking at 100,000 students, you're looking at staff, you're looking at faculty, and you're looking at administration as well. And then, we also have a DR facility that, in the event of a disaster, we have some sort of failover. And then, finally, what really impressed me is this, all of this is supported by a group of less than 100 people. So, congratulations to you, and thank you for what you're doing, and for keeping us moving day after day. So, thanks. Did you want to add anything to that, Ms. Appleman?
No. It was a great big room filled with big gray boxes.[444.01][444.01](Laughter). And we stood there, and Mr. Raghu made them all make sense to us.[450.11][450.11](Laughter). So, we appreciate his time with us.
Yes. So, thank you for that. Also, while I was at the Trinity River Campus today, I had the opportunity to participate the close, in the closing ceremonies and the certificate presentations for the Latina STEM Camp. And it was just tremendously impressive. I have a few notes here I wanted to share with you. It's a two-week intensive program, and it is, the camp is really for students that are in the 15 to 21-year-old range. And these young ladies just demonstrated an interest in STEM. So, about eighty percent of the ones that participated, and there were about twenty, almost 25, eighty percent of them are first-generation college students. And the whole concept itself is like the brainchild of Dr. Sophia Garcia, who is at the Trinity River Campus. She's in life sciences, is that correct? Yes. And she's collaborated with Dr. Robert Munoz, and thus began a collaboration of many other departments at TCC. I know that David Jimenez was also involved, and also Jackie Mackey and many of the staff. There were several folks that served as mentors as well. Foundation was also involved. So, it was really, really a community effort. The fellowship is a comprehensive focus on skill building. So, they're just not learning about STEM, they're actually learning some skills. And they're focused on career planning as well, and they're working a lot with mentors. I think that what impressed me most about the whole thing is that the students are tested before and after the program. And with that information, what it's going to allow us to do is to track the progress of the students as they're participating. What started out as a two-week camp is going to be a year-round fellowship because of a partnership with actually several community, in businesses as well. And I think Lockheed Martin is also going to be instrumental in helping. They're going to be providing mentors, they'll be providing, I believe they will also be having some education sessions and things like that. So, it's truly is a collaboration of many, many folks. The one thing that I thought was interesting, too, is that it, it just proved to me the potential and the strength of the pathways model, because I think that this is a demonstration of how pathways can actually work, because we're bringing these students in as middle school. We'll be tracking them through high school, we'll be tracking them through community college, through their, through their bachelor's, and also their postgraduate degrees. And it was just overall, it was interesting to hear them talk about, "I knew that I was interested in science, and I knew I wanted to do something in science, but now I know how to get there, what I need to do, what courses I need to take." So, it, again, it ties very beautifully in with the pathways model. And I just want to congratulate Dr. Garcia, I want to congratulate Dr. Iris Duarte, who also is teaching with her, Dr. Munoz, Jackie Mackey, David Jimenez, Liz Sisk, and Dr. Madison, and so many others that participated. It was really, really impressive. And I'd like to ask if we could maybe have Dr. Garcia, or consider at some point to maybe talk a little bit more about it.
Make a presentation for the board.
Yes. Sure. Okay. Thank you very much.
Dr. Morrison?
Good evening, everyone. So, this has been a very, very busy week for me. The 81st National Convention for the National Association of Negro Business and Professional Women's Clubs Incorporated. This is the 81st National Convention for the National Association of Negro Business and Professional Women's Clubs Incorporated. I've said to you before that I've been a part of that organization since I was 13, because my older sister, Ethel Coler, was a member, and she always took me along with her. So, that's where I first practiced my public speaking skills. So, on Tuesday, Trinity River Campus has been extremely busy. They hosted the leadership classes for the presidents and vice presidents from all over the country. They had classes in technology and leadership and so forth. We had a partnership going. Texas Health Resources had their mobile mammogram unit there, caused a lot of excitement in downtown, which was great. And also, we had dental students from Baylor, I'm sorry, Texas A&amp;M College of Dentistry were there doing dental assessments. And today, we hosted about 55 young people from across the country who had first a panel on Safe Encounters led by Dr. Wafif Sabir, who, some of you may not know, he's a retired police officer, he's an assistant to Dr. Madison. And also on that panel was the Honorable L. Clifford Davis, Attorney Bobby Edmonds, and Sergeant Billy Price, who's a current police officer with the Fort Worth Police Department. So, that was quite engaging. And after that, Dean Joe Cameron's team came in and made a presentation to the young people about the different programs offered on campus. And then, they toured, got to tour, and then they planted a tree in commemoration of the event. What was exciting to me, of course, was the opportunity to show off the beautiful campus. Everyone just thinks our facilities are amazing, and they are. But also, the teamwork and the dedication of the staff. You know, once they accepted this project, they really gave it their all. I mean, they just, they worked seamlessly together like a family. And one of the other ladies commented to me, in fact, the youth leader from Dallas, who's over South Central District, closed six states, she said, "I wish we could move our youth retreat here, because your staff is so engaged, and when we go to Richland, all we get is a space. We don't get any engagement."[853.82][853.82](Laughter). So, that was wonderful. And what, another thing that was exciting was that Deion Anglin was there for hours on campus taping. I don't know when that's going to play with her cameraman, so I know we're going to get some good coverage out of it. But it was an awesome event. I appreciate Dr. Madison and his staff, and all of the district staff that had to cooperate to get that done. It truly was a district staff effort. So, I appreciate everybody for showing off our beautiful facilities and showing Tarrant County College District in such a good light. You have an appreciation certificate floating around somewhere with your name on it. Thank you, Ms. Appleman, for allowing me to share. And so, maybe we'll find out when we're, when the campus is going to be featured on, is it Channel 4? Deion Anglin, Channel 4? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Evans?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to report on June 19th, I had the opportunity to visit with Dr. Coppola and Dr. Carrie Thompson, and I think almost 1,000 young people with their College for Kids program, they do an outstanding job, and I'm just always impressed by the great work that is done out there on Southeast Campus. So, I want to thank them for hosting me, and of course, Dr. Carrie Thompson, she was my first boss at TCC, so now I get to tell her what to do. So, that's a great, great feeling.[943.01][943.01](Laughter).
I doubt it.
No, you know I don't get to do that. Also, congratulations are due to my old board and to Superintendent Jim Vaschaskas as Region 11 Superintendent of the Year. And our school board was recognized, excuse me, 2016, 2017 MISD Board of Trustees as Region 11's School Board of the Year. And of course, we know that MISD boasts the largest enrollment of dual-credit students in Tarrant County. So, that's something we're proud of, and since I'm no longer a part of that board, I figured I'd give them one last shout-out. So, thank you very much, Madam President. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Anyone else? Mrs. Groves brought me this. This is hot off the press. This is the North Texas Commission Magazine, and we have the first two pages having to do with our, "A Growing Industry: Tarrant County College is the Region's Premier Training Ground for Healthcare Professionals." So, thank you, Suzanne, for that nice coverage.
Oh, Ms. Appleman, I will mention that I met the new director for the Vocational Nursing Program. I can't remember his name, but he's already on the job, so very, very excited about starting that program. So, I was delighted to meet the staff.
Great. Mr. Heath? We don't even want to know about your last several weeks. He's been on the East Coast, in the cool, having fun.
I did visit the Culinary Institute of America. And I'd like to see our Southeast Campus kind of resemble that in the future. They have lots of room and lots of equipment, and, yeah.
We should make a sign visit, right?
Maybe they can adopt us.[1055.41][1055.41](Laughter).
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, Mr. Greenhill, you've been in the mountains for two weeks, too.
I have.
Okay.[1065.41][1065.41](Laughter). I'm keeping up with all my chickens. I know where they are. Dr. Patrick is off somewhere. All right. Consent agenda, five items, consideration and approval of proposed revisions to policy BCA, local, which has to do with term limits, consideration and approval of Dr. Juvenini to the City of Fort Worth Tax Increment Finance District Number Nine, as well as appointment to the Arlington, City of Arlington Tax Increment Finance Districts 1, 4, 5, and 6, the consideration and approval of Continuing Education Certificate Program for the Veterinary Clinical Assistant Program, and finally, consideration and approval of appointment of trustee Teresa Ayala to the ACC Pathways Program. I would ask a motion to approve those.
Move to approve.
Second items. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Who seconded that?
Dr. Evans.
Dr. Evans. Thank you.
Dr. Evans. I'll hurt him first.
All right. Dr. Juvenini, consideration and hopeful approval of the annual college goals.
Thank you, Mrs. Appleman. And to put this into context and some framework, last week, the governing board spent a good two and a half hours talking about what we're asking them to approve this evening related to the college goals. And so, to put that, that discussion in context, I thought it was very important this evening to provide some form of an abbreviated presentation to what we had done last week and what the board had considered, and we chatted about for, for over those, those two couple of hours. So, with that, I'll move forward with that, with that presentation. Let me first say, you know, when I first came here, it's often asked right away, "Well, what do you want us to do?" And what was coming back to me all the time, well, what's, when's he going to tell us what to do? And so, as time went on, I think that the response kind of stuck in that, you know, I'm not going to tell you what to do. And then, I got the looks like, "What did we, who did we hire? This guy doesn't even know what to do." And so, we began a process as to go down that road. And you heard me talk, and all of us talk about meeting students where they are, and I'm a firm believer in, as a leader, meeting an organization where it is as well, and really focusing on that organization, where it's at, and what it thinks it needs to do to move forward, under the auspices of doing the right things and doing those right things right. So, you know, really more of, not necessarily leading from a, of a power base of, you know, where I've been and what I know, but more from a knowledge base as to knowing this organization, and then leading it and moving forward. So, we need to spend time on the what, and that's what I'm going to talk a little bit about, and then how, then as we move from the what to the how. And that's really the, the leadership in which my office will provide. So, the year's really been focused a lot on listening, learning informally, informally, doing assessments, meeting with different groups. We had informal listening, formal listening sessions through our contractual arrangement with Air Saint Gross. We did a number of visioning exercises at the campuses and the district office to really understand for the, for the college, to really express, what is it that we need to be paying attention to as we move forward? We were informed through a lot of facilities, information related to the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing needs, HR needs, strategic enrollment management, and all of it. So, there are a number of items that fed this knowledge base of what we are, what we think we need to do in order to move forward. And what I'm going to talk a little bit about tonight and roll out this semester, beginning with the chancellor's breakfast, is just that, and that the year culminating in eight thematic issues that were identified, really, through all this activity. And culminating with how we would move forward with those issues. So, the eight culminating themes came down to these eight here. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time, just a brief time, in articulating what some, what these actually mean, but go into much more detail in the future. But let it be, no, we must address these things in order to create, solidify our foundation, and move forward for a successful future. These are the things that came back from the campuses. This is about the college. This is not about a chancellor's vision, if you will. This is about the college that came back through the exercises that we went through. We must, must get these right, must do them well in order for us to move forward and progress, and I think we will. The eight principles that we have identified here, again, came through all of the visioning sessions, all of the formal and informal meetings that we had. And so, I just want to take some time to go through these. We're not going to address these all in one year. They're not done in chronological order. There will be a process, which I'll talk a little bit about later, about how we'll work through. But these are the themes that we will address. And so, first being library, and it's really the work that will need to be done, which came forward and said, "In order to move our libraries to learning centers, these are the kind, the bullets here that you see, these are the type of things that we need to address." And I'm not going to read them to you, but suffice it, it really talks about looking at a different model, if you will, as it relates to supporting student success through the concept of learning centers, which is dependent upon integration of technology and resources and support in doing so. And so, a few slides to work through, just to give some visual and understanding of kind of what we're talking about, and some old-school, new-school stuff, and some examples of what learning commons really look like. This is Austin Community College, North Carolina State University. All right, pretty neat. We don't see a lot of libraries like this, do we? Okay? But, but activities, an environment which really resonates with the students of today in media and creating media and media labs. And again, we do have some of this, but we don't have enough of it. Abilene Christian, right down the road, our folks, Air Saint Gross, who we work with, actually did this work down there. So, this is a product of some of their work. The second principle really deals with how we intake students. And it's really about streamlining the process for onboarding students in a systematic way. We'll need to address process, policy, and programming. It's not that we don't do those things right now, but we grew up with five campuses, six campuses, everyone doing what they think is right and working hard. And that's great. But when we try to really face the community as one college, the, the community sees us very differently based upon the campus they got to, they go to. That's not anything good, not anything bad, or anything indifferent. It's just the fact that that's the way it is. And so, what we, what we determined as a college is these are the things that we need to pay attention to in order to onboard students. And this is one of the places that I used to be down the road from me, Phoenix College. Going to give some examples of, of some space. And what I really want to reiterate, and I'm going to do it at the end, but it's very, very important, this is not a facilities exercise. When you go through this, you're going to find out, 75% of these bullets really deal with process, policy, how we're going to do work, how we're going to interact with each other, how we're going to present ourselves. Now, we have to do it in a building, obviously, and we have to have furniture in the building. So, some of it is going to be dependent upon that. But I really want to emphasize that quite a bit, because what, what we don't want to do is project this as a facilities exercise. It really is about preparing our students the best that we think within the, within the confines that, that we have. Here's an example of, of, of a page that, that the goal would be that, and it's busy, but the goal would be that no matter what campus you go to, you're going to see as a student a similar page like this, not identical to this, but in fact, it will incorporate what every student really needs to be able to have access to, and they'll know that they'll be able to have access to it through this page, through this process, or whatever. The third one deals with the student success resources. So, we're talking to things about, not in the classroom, not in student services, per se, but really our campus and our campus services, and how it looks, and how it presents to students. And you can see what those things are. Sticky Space is one of the things that we have invested in, and we've done some good job in that. We need to do it across the, across the campus, each of the campuses. And here's an example of some space that would, that would show well and serve students well. This is Alamo College, could be a Northwest Campus, Serena. We just need a little, little brick and a dock, right? And we'd be just, okay? So, you get the idea, and, and we can share a lot more than this. This is again from Abilene Christian as well, against student success space, which really is, is appealing to students. We talk about students wanting, we want them to stay around, we want them to be engaged. Well, we need to have space in order for them to do that. And, and again, I know I'm talking about the space, but you know, that's also what's in the space there that provides for the, the student interaction. The fourth one really deals more from the, more from the classroom perspective, and that is, as we look at students and how they learn today, and we have a lot of activity around student-centered learning and active classrooms and flexible classrooms, and we do have some work being done in that already. But that very much is what came back, is, is the future. So, how are we going to align ourselves, our classrooms, such that we are ready for the learner of today? And it will require investment, investment in professional development for faculty. And these are some spaces here that you're going to see provide for good active learning. These things are on wheels, so you could have, you know, some physical activity with them as well, I guess. And then, again, they, they, to format them in a different manner. So, we're going to see, you know, kind of a straight tables, if you will, one this way and this way, same furniture. Don't really care for the green, but it's, it's an example. Pretty traditional classroom as it looks to that. And so, when you begin, so it allows a faculty member, really, okay, we're going to spend 20 minutes, and, and as a faculty member, and I'm going to be the show, and we're going to look like this, okay? And, and then the next half hour or hour, you know, you're going to have your activities to do, and you're going to look like that. Now, you have to have furniture to be able to do that, things like that. So, here's another, a tiered classroom, that a lot of people don't like, but see what can happen with it, and moving folks around. A space, again, multiple use, same furniture. A lab, same furniture, multiple use. So, to get an idea of all of these environments and create opportunity in the classroom to do different things that perhaps we're not able to do because of that physical layout. The fifth, which we've already started some work on, really speaks to scheduling and the use of rooms, the utilization of rooms, and I saw, I know it sounds kind of corny, but really, a pro, an intensive, purposeful response, reaction to ensure that we're using our facilities, our classrooms appropriately. So, you know, if it's, if we know it's going to be a class of 15, probably not, shouldn't be in a lecture hall of 60, and, you know, and vice versa. A dependable schedule. Our students swirl from campus to campus. They work one wet place. schedule. Our students swirl from campus to campus. They work one place, live another, play another. A dependable schedule will certainly go a long way in assisting, um, assisting that. So, again, it'll be policy and protocol related to the use of the, the classroom space. And I have different slides, but I'm trying to cut this down a bit, didn't want to show, uh, um, take up too mu, too much time with it. But we certainly have slides for that, too, that we will show, uh, at a later time. The next really speaks to campus character and quality. And it's not that we don't have any, we got a lot of it, okay? But it's kind of all over the board. We have some campuses that have four front doors, Dr. Goldman. And we have some campuses that have no front doors. Um, and we have some campuses that the parking garage, Dr. Madison, is the front door, okay? And then, now, these things kind of happen. And this, this isn't all terrible, but the point is that when you're really trying to, you know, if you really want to put an effort to it, those are some things you're going to look at. We have circulation that goes a, a lot of places, and, and, and some of it works real well, and some of it does not. And so, some intent of purpose as to how each campus is going to look. So, this is not going to be a cookie cutter, that every camp is going to be a lot, look alike, because they're all, they're all different. But there will be some parameters around how we want the campus to look, like moving the vehicular circulation out, so it's not within the campus and, you know, and hitting people. And it's good wayfinding and orienting. So, when you come in, you kind of know where you're at, and you know where you're going. And so, to, to redesign our campuses under this context is what we would, we'd be looking for to do. Uh, believe it or not, this was a sh, uh, strip mall, shopping strip. Um, this is Austin Community College. So, fortunately, we don't have to deal with a strip mall, but see with some of the things that can be done. Certainly makes a presence here at Loyola. You know where the front door is here. Uh, it's loud and clear. And so, um, there's some amazing things that can be done, uh, with this, with, with the right minds. And I've seen them done. I don't have that skill, but I've seen, um, uh, the work of, 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 of Air Saint Gross in particular and some others related to taking some simple principles and orient the campus around those. The seventh of the eighth really deals with our work environment. We have, uh, just in this building is a good example, a lot of walls, a lot of offices, a lot of siloing. And so, often, you know, we do our work based upon the culture, about the environment that we're in. And we've, I've talked before a little bit about, you know, really wanting to work out of silos well. You, in order to do that, put the money where the mouth is, design, uh, workspace that really, um, eradicates that. So, um, looking at space that is really more open in nature and to provide, you know, services across the district in doing so. Here's an example. Uh, those of you who've been to TCC Connect, that's a wide open space. That's another, that's a good example, uh, as well as what we'd be looking like. Now, as you can imagine, that's not going to happen overnight. That's, that's quite a bit of transition. But that's something that we wish to aspire to. Here's some shared, you know, shared workspaces as well, whatever you want to call them. And I know you've seen, been in other organizations and seen those, but, um, uh, these are some colleges, actually. The last one deals is around the whole issue of high schools and working with high schools. Um, dual enrollment, early college high schools, a great opportunity for us, great opportunity for growth. Uh, we need a concise, consistent business model in which to how we address that, uh, how we move forward. Are we going to build more early college high schools? What are the parameters in which we're going to have the agreements and partnerships with the high schools? Where are the classes going to be taught? Who's going to teach them and so forth? So, to put our head a little bit around that. We're also getting some, um, some suggestions from the legislature on how to do that, too. I'd really like to beat them to the punch and, and do it ourselves, if you will. So, that would be the eighth one. Um, let me say, and before, you know, um, moving on here for a second, is that, um, some of you are probably wondering, you know, how are we going to do this? And one of the things that's really going to probably change the most from an operational perspective, and I talked before about people working hard and doing good things and, and doing what they think is right. And that is great. Um, but we really need to bring some structure and strategy around bringing those good ideas together. So, we will be moving forward with a project management philosophy, meaning they will dedicate resources to help project manage these things. There will be leaders, champions of all of these, um, you know, dealing, the issues, dealing with these priorities. Anyone that wishes to be involved can, can be involved, whether, whether it's their, uh, it's in their area or not. We want this wide open in terms of, 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 of participation, a lot of transparency. People, just because they work in a certain area, they could bring a lot of, you know, uh, good ideas and resources to a different topic. So, as we move forward, we will be pulling together across the college, you know, and there'll, there'll be plenty of opportunity to be engaged in, in, in that process here. And we will support it through a project manager. So, it will be a template, if you will. And I don't want to get, you know, too detailed, but, you know, the, a lot of, obviously, a lot of the, the interest of the governing board is certainly going to be, you know, okay, so, big deal, so what? At the end, what happens? Well, it's going to be these projects, who's going to be involved? What they're going to be doing? What's the timeline? What's it going to cost? And the big piece, what's the outcome going to be? And so, there'll be dashboards, or however you want to say, for, for, for every single one of those, we'll be able to go see where we are. And as you can probably already, you know, think through, this can get a little bit complicated. That's why we need the project management approach to it. I heard a lot about initiative fatigue. I've probably heard those two words here this last year and never heard in my entire life. And there's a reason for that. You know, again, working hard and starting something and getting to a certain point, say, oh, we can't go any further because we, we got to do this before. And then we start and, oh, we got it. And then before you know it, you're four or five uHos down the road, and you forget really what you're even trying to accomplish. The project management approach will help, uh, do this. And again, this is not about the facilities. These are really about, um, the, the facets of these principles and what it's going to take to address them. And once again, they came from all the visioning sessions, all the informal, informal dialogue that we had o, over the last year. So, as you can well imagine, this is going to take us not a year to do, you know, probably a bit more. So, this is going to be with us for a while. It can be fluid. Will we be doing other things? Yeah, we'll be doing other things. But frankly, we've said this is our focus, and we can only do so much. And so, this is where we are going to focus, uh, moving forward. So, as we, uh, check off these principles, um, what I'd asked, uh, Dr. LeBlanc to do is pull the group together and say, if we were to do these things, what would we actually be accomplishing, or under what umbrella would we do so? And really thinking about these as this, this exercise resulted in the, in the principles themselves, they should give us some focus around strategy, um, to move forward. And do we have the will to do so in moving forward? And that's going to be the three things we're going to talk about a lot. Focus on these things, developing strategy around them, and then developing the will to actually deliver on them. So, uh, as Dr. LeBlanc worked with some groups and said, if, if we accomplish, if we, if we executed on these principles, if we delivered on them, what would we be actually be accomplishing? And the three goals, and I'm going to show a little bit of an expansion version of that, uh, in a second here, but, but frankly, it's three, three very basic principles, directives, if you will, not principles, but directives as to how we want to move forward as a college. And you can see what those three are. Specifically, goal one is really to focus on the culture and the programs and service, very consistent, uh, in terms of how students see us and how students experience us, from policies, procedures, and, and resource allocation. So, every campus, if you will, is adequately resourced to provide what students actually need. And so, um, so there's not an unequal, uh, division there, or students don't perceive a different experience. The second would be around being a student-ready college. And that is really some of the things we've talked about before, is we focus our work and focus it through the eyes of the student, what would it look like? You'll see a lot of work and pathways there as it relates to assisting students to move through, uh, their pathway. Uh, faculty and staff, awareness of how students learn, adopt appropriate learning strategies. So, again, it's going to be a, a process and what goes on in the classroom, meeting students where they are at and helping them engage the college experience. And then finally, and this is broad in nature when we talk about partnerships, but serving the community, uh, in total. Um, so, I firmly believe that, uh, you know, to, to, to keep things rather simple. We have three goals, and that's our direction. If we work on these eight principles, our strategy, we'll be achieving our direction. That's simple. So, this would really, uh, define, if you will, uh, the work that we need to accomplish as a college in the future. So, with that, uh, I would present the three goals for the Board of Adoption and Assemblymen, and welcome any questions.
If you want to roll back to the three goals screen. There you go. All right. Um, just so you know, you just had a speed dial version of what the board heard and considered and discussed at our governance committee meeting last week. So, please know this is not the first time we have heard and seen this. And certainly, for most of you in the room, it's not the first time, because you were part of the process with the consultants' leadership and, um, then ultimately to establish these goals and take us forward. So, to, um, stay correct, I would entertain a motion to approve the goals.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Heed and second advice, Dr. Evans. And we will discuss. Mr. Greenhill, you missed the discussion. What do you see? Do you like it?
I appreciate, uh, I, 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 I really am excited about this. I had breakfast this morning with, uh, the chancellor, and we went over this thoroughly as well. So, I am well informed about this, and I've got it in front of me, as a matter of fact. And we went through all the pictures. And I'm very excited about this. This is something that we've needed to do for a very, very long time. And I wish I could third it, but that's not procedurally correct, is it, Angela?
And we did have a lot more slides and, and photos of possibilities. Any other comments or questions, concerns? Dr. Evans?
Uh, I would just like to add that, um, I, I like this, and, and I appreciated the presentation that we did receive. What I like about it is that, um, it, um, is somewhat of a culture change, but the culture change appears to be driven by, um, staff, uh, faculty in particular. And I, and I think that's important when things like this grow up from the bottom up, that, uh, we, we have a better, uh, chance at, uh, success. So, uh, I know, I know one of the things that, uh, we said together is that, uh, we look forward to getting behind the chancellor, uh, supporting this and helping to make this happen, and also working along with, um, the Tarrant County College, uh, staff and, and others, uh, to make sure that, uh, we're number one in the entire country. So, uh, that, that's what we should strive for. And it looks like we have a good plan.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'd just like to say that this, I, I think this is really geared to making our college a lot more efficient in so many ways. Um, and, and it, I think, again, focuses on what we're all about, and that is student success. I mean, it's all about the student, and it's one college helping each and every student that comes here. And I, I strongly support this.
All right. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I know Dr. Patrick could join us for unanimous endorsement.
Thank, thank you very much. As, as far as moving forward, at the chancellor's breakfast, uh, much of this will be, uh, shared. And then immediately following that, there will be a number of visits, if you will, out to the campuses to fully engage the campuses so we understand what this is. And so, uh, there will be, I want folks to be aware that, that how that gets rolled out and the opportunity, uh, for people to really be informed of it and ask the questions so it's fully understood. Uh, we will then, and obviously, we've already begun moving on some of these things, the classroom utilization being one of them. But we'll begin then putting together, as I mentioned before, that strategy around , uh, project management of, of all these with, with champions for each one, for a real, um, you know, uh, good outline as to how each project would, would play out and the, and those that are involved. And, and, and certainly that will be public and shared, um, continuously. So, there will point, at any point, anyone can go to and see. I'm not a real big believer in, uh, the 50-page strategic plan and putting it on the wall. So, we're going to have a 10, 12 pages here that's going to be virtual, and people will be able to check in and see where we are with that at any time. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you who participated and got us to this point. And now we'll get to work. All right. Returning to the agenda and item number eight. Um, Ms. Petty, you have a number of items, so come to the podium, and I will call them out. And again, we have been over, uh, each of these in some detail, but of course, would entertain any questions or, uh, discussion from the board. Item number eight, consideration and approval of deductive change order with Chambers Engineering for demolition of heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration building on South Campus. This is a credit to be returned to the college in the amount of $25,512.09. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second, Dr. Evans. Any questions or comments, arguments with money coming back to the college? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Item number nine, another credit, consideration and approval of deductive change order with Facility Solutions Group for installation of low-voltage switch gear on South Campus Central Utility Plant in the amount of $36,000. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Mr. Heed?
Second.
Second, Mr. Greenhill. Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item, uh, number nine, approved. Number 10, consideration and approval of deductive change order with North Texas Contracting for Materials and Installation of Water Distribution upgrades on Northeast Campus in the amount of $507,716. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Mr. Heed?
Second.
Second, Mr. Greenhill. Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, consideration and approval of indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity service, IDIQ Authorization Agreement with Benner Bennett Partners to provide design services for the Texas Academy of Biomedical Services, high school space renovation on Trendy River Campus West Fork Tower in the amount of $426,210.44. Motion to approve?
So, move?
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heed. Questions, comments? Ms. Petty, you want to?
Yes, I might, um, add that the Fort Worth ISD has approved in their, um, board meeting on the 27th, um, I think that's the right date, um, to participate in a 50-50, uh, split with us on this contract. It's not in your materials because we didn't have it, um, assured to us at this time. But, uh, the contract is, is with Tarrant County College. But, uh, we will be receiving half the funding for this contract, uh, back from the Fort Worth ISD. So, I just want to make that notation in the notes and in the minutes.
Okay. Questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, uh, consideration and approval of indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity service authorization agreement with VAI Architects and partnerships with Air Saint Gross for Phase Three Documentation and Implementation Strategies for Visioning and Critical Needs Shirets in the amount of $674,089 plus a contingency of $226,168. Motion to approve?
So, move?
Who's that? Mr. Greenhill?
Dr. Evans.
Dr. Evans, excuse me. And Mr. Heed, seconded. Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 13, consideration and approval of contract with Facility Solutions Group for installation of lighting system upgrades in the Fine Arts Building on Northeast Campus in the amount of $544,403. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Mr. Heed, seconded by Dr. Evans. Questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to remove, uh, item number 14 from the agenda, uh, for future consideration.
Yeah, you will see that one come back. We're just, the numbers didn't come in, uh, where we wanted them. So, we'll bring it back to you.
Back to the drawing board on item number 14. So, moving to item number 15, consideration and approval of contract with Contractors International for installation of chiller and supporting systems on South Campus in an amount not to exceed $907,111.55. Motion to approve?
So, move?
Mr. Greenhill?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Evans. Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16, consideration and approval of contract to DMI Decker Mechanical to provide and install sump pump equipment on South Campus not to exceed $781,704. Motion to approve?
So, move?
Dr. Evans?
Second.
Mr. Heed. Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 17, consideration and approval of job order contract and construction services contract with Texas Refrigeration to provide space renovation for aerospace manufacturing lab at the TCC Opportunity Center. This, um, amount has changed from $350,000 to $145,357.26. Does that show up on y'all's?
Yep.
Okay. So, um, the motion is to approve $145,357.26. So, move. Dr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Heed?
I assume that's not to exceed?
No.
$145,000?
Yeah, that's.
I assume that's not to exceed $145, or does not exceed come out as well?
No, correct. That's the contract amount.
Okay.
Of the $145.
Okay.
And that was due to us getting in and doing some due diligence on our ductwork and being able to reuse some of the ductwork, so costs came down quite a bit.
We like it. Any other questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 18, consideration and approval of Texas procurement and support services statewide managed term contract 885-M1 agreement with U.S. Water to provide water treatment, chemicals, and services for use district-wide in an amount not to exceed $231,875.
Move for approval.
Mr. Heed moves to approve.
Second.
Dr. Evans?
Mm-hmm.
Seconded. Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Again, we've seen all these before. If you're new to the room and us, please know this is not a first read. Okay, Dr. McLendon?
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. We are in the month of, we will be presenting the month of June's financial statements. This is our 10th month. We review all revenue and expenses and look at items that are greater than 90 percent. And, okay, so if we look at the total income today, it's expected, it's similar to last year, it's 95.5.9 percent versus 97.1 percent. Okay, so total education and general income is 95.4 percent. All right? Expenses. We reviewed all our expenses, and we looked at items greater than 90 percent. Finance and I have reviewed all the items that are greater than 90 percent, and there are no new items to highlight which we have not mentioned before as a BPO or anything. So our overall general expenses are 80.7 percent versus a budget of 83 percent. All right? So investments, all right? So if we look at our investments, our beginning, we have only in our pools a decrease of $13.2 million. If we look at our short term, we have no activity. Our U.S. agent securities, there's a market adjustment decrease of .2 percent, $2.2 million. Our total portfolio is beginning balance of 322 versus 309.5, so that's a decrease of $13.3 million. All right? Our yield is 1.16 percent, and we have a spread compared to the T-bill of .32 percent. And we have a WAM, weighted average movement, of 381 days versus 365.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any comments or questions to Dr. McLendon?
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Chivani? No news, snap in the video. Okay. We, Ms. Appleman?
Yes, ma'am. Can I correct one oversight?
Yes.
For me, another great thing that I'm proud of, and you know, I just burst with pride about Tarrant County College District all the time, is the TCC Police Honor Guard. And I was so excited to observe them perform the posting of colors for the opening session for the 81st National Convention. The audience was in awe. They were such a fine-looking group of, and I will say, young men. And someone commented, they don't think they've ever had a college honor guard post the colors. It was quite amazing. To me, they could have been doing it for the Queen of England. They were that precise. So I want to thank Chief Williams and Ms. Robinson and all the staff, that they were in formation the entire time they were there waiting. It was about 40 minutes, you know, to get everybody lined up, protocols. They just were awesome. So thank you.
Thank you. We will go into executive session and do anticipate one item of business after that to be voted on. Deliberation of real property, section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. Deliberation on personnel matters, section 551.074 of Texas Government Code. Consultation with the attorney, section 551.071 of Texas Government Code. Our next Governance Committee meeting is August 10th, and then we will have our regular board meeting on the 17th. So if you are not going to stay and hear about the action of the closed session, we will see you in August, if not before. Thank you for joining us tonight.